Okay, the stand please with the flag. Flagpole.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, first order of business will be the minutes, review of the minutes from June's meeting. Anybody have any corrections or changes?
No.
I make a motion that the minutes be accepted.
I make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are done. Next order of business is a variance for Nine Cliffside Court in Garrison. The applicant is seeking a variance for driveway with steep slopes and also a portion of the foundation. Our applicant's here, you want to step up to the mic, please? Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to do, I'm going to change that. Sit down because I've got a lot of stuff I've got to read. So don't send you guys standing up there, I know where you're going to get you, okay? Thank you. All right, since this, what's before us is just a basically variance for the portion of driveway that's got to exceed thirty-five percent. You have a survey that was presented that shows you what that portion is, how much of the driveway. Driveway's a five, I think it's a little over five hundred feet. And you look at the colored section where the driveway is, it'll show you the sections that'll exceed the thirty-five percent grade. Existing, is it existing thirty percent or greater slopes, it says, over thirty percent. And then it's a portion of the house with foundation, you'll see that's colored in, that also will exceed the, I think that's twenty percent, I believe. Now, I got a correspondence from the planning board, it's dated June tenth. Let me see, have that hold on. It's actually from Ron Gaynor, but I guess it was a meeting with the planning board, all the planning board and with the, also with the applicant's and the applicant's father. Project overview, the application concerns a vacant residentially zoned 1.12 acre property along the east side of Cliffside Court, private cul-de-sac road off Upland Drive, also private road. The applicant plans to construct a two-bedroom, single-family residence on the property. On-site water and sanitary disposal systems will service the residence. Putnam County Department of Health approval of the SSST has been received, so they have approval for the code considerations. The property is located in suburban residential zoning district and also within a recently created Upland Drive and Ridge Road Development Districts, section of the town's zoning ordinance. The subject property involves environmentally sensitive lands, including town regulated steep slopes, that's twenty percent, and significant rock outcropping throughout the property. The driveway will traverse grades exceeding thirty-five percent, with the house proposed within slopes exceeding twenty percent. That's a portion of the foundation, that's in colored in. The driveway will traverse grades, various aspects of the truck's development and existing private roadway on which it lies will require relief from town regulations. The steep slope analysis plan of the site will utilize to evaluate the site's topography or proposed development during inspection, sites, comments, and observations. The following summarizes observations amount to discuss over the course of the inspection. A view of the town approvals involved. The planning board. The planning board authorization approval is required to improve private roadways to a lesser standard than that specified under town road regulations. To permit this, the planning board must be satisfied that the roadway still shall have suitable grades and alignment considering the level of traffic anticipated and provide safe and convenient access for cars and emergency vehicles. To address this issue, the applicant has provided a plan identifying the extent of the roadway and drainage work they are willing to perform to improve the conditions along the roadway. This includes providing approximately 280 linear foot of asphalt millings, four inches deep, along both sides of Cliffside Court to widen the existing roadway in the area of their frontage, and installing a four-by-four catch basin at the inlet to an existing drainage pipe on the Cliffside Court to eliminate a depression along the edge of the roadway for motorist's safety. Additionally, the present roadway cul-de-sac will widen as necessary to achieve a forty-five foot diameter with a fifteen-inch pipe, cross pipe installed along a swell. Eleven twelve thirty-five C. All private ways are required to have a legally established roadway maintenance agreement in place to assure a long-term maintenance of the roadway. The applicant has advised that based upon efforts made to date to have one executed by other existing property owners on Cliffside Drive, this is not possible. The issue remains unresolved. The board's counsel should be sought as to how this matter is to be addressed. Zoning Board of Appeals, one seventy-five eighteen, one seventy-five thirty-six. Due to extent of steep slopes on the property, the applicant must obtain relief from the zoning board of appeals for the following code requirements. Driveway construction within slopes of thirty-five percent, higher than thirty-five percent. House construction in slopes twenty percent. Also, one seventy-five eighteen, the applicant requires relief from this new code section which requires a maximum lot coverage of ten percent while the applicant's development proposes nineteen point six percent lots coverage. Again, guidance from town attorney should be obtained to establish whether this requires ZBA action or if the planning board may grant relief from this section. Adam, do you know anything about this?
Yeah, the referral is for the steep slopes, for the house and the driveway. The lot development coverage is not part of the referral until the planning board actually makes that referral to us.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. The applicant will be appearing after June tenth, ZBA being to pursue the variance if necessary. Conservation Board. Activities used in construction which involve land disturbance on slopes twenty percent or greater within steep terrain, wetland, and water course transition areas which are subject to site plan approval require referral to the conversation board for review and advice with regard to the effects of the land disturbance. Alternatives for development warranted mitigation measures. Site development. The entity of the five hundred foot long serpentine driveway from Cliffside Court with diverse existing grades between fifteen to thirty-five percent, with some areas exceeding thirty-five percent. This will include traversing areas of bedrock which will require removal. Fill will be required along the first fifty foot of the driveway leading from Cliffside Court. Thereafter, cuts as much as ten feet will be necessary over the next four hundred feet to reduce the driveway. Driveway's grade to the town maximum permitted grade a level of fourteen percent. It is noted that the driveway grades at the roadway should utilize a minus-three percent grade for the first twenty-five feet to prevent runoff from entering the roadway. With the current demand for real estate, for housing development, as well as the county of Putnam's actions in placing a number of such properties up for public sale, this has created a likelihood of substantial development of these environmentally sensitive properties. The purpose of this code section was to enact additional regulations to ensure any development of these lands is done within a safe and environmentally sound manner. Respecting the town board's desire that any development in these districts be given added scrutiny, given the privileges presented, at a minimum, the following additional information should be provided so that each of the boards involved in this application perform their due diligence in evaluating any development proposal within the delineated districts. Development of overall site plan which actually establishes the spiral extent and area of disturbance which will result from the development of the lot. Submission of information as to extent of cuts and fills necessary to construct the site access. House construction and SST area of the track. This should include an estimate of the extent of rock removals necessary. It is expected that much of the solid rock cuts to be performed will likely require removal from the site for disposal. Once all cuts and fills are known, if an excess of materials will result, the impact of a large heavy construction equipment traveling these private roads should be discussed and mitigated if found necessary. A true removal plan denoting the type and caliber of all trees, TBHB, with any areas to be disturbed or to be removed should be provided. The finished floor evaluation of the house, elevation of the house as well as the minimum driveway width should be specified on plan. Linear extent and length of all retaining walls proposed throughout the property. Identification of all drainage improvements necessary to handle and migrate an increased runoff which will result from development of the track and to assure that no runoff is directed onto the Cliffside Court roadway. Now, there's a lot in there.
Bob, you skipped a page.
I'm sorry.
Did you mean skip page three?
Who?
Did you mean skip page three?
What did I miss?
You went from two to four.
Oh, I didn't go there. Which page is it? Did I miss it?
You went from here to...
I missed that page.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what I was...
Okay, I got the last page, you're right.
Yeah.
So this is the page I missed?
Yeah, you missed, yeah, that, where it says...
The house?
Yeah, numbers three, four, and five.
Okay. Thank you. Constructibility issues. In discussing numerous areas where bedrock is visible, the applicant's father felt that the rock on site could be split, removed by mechanical means without blasting, although substantial removals will be required. Further, the specific means of its removal will only be known once construction commences. As areas of the visible bedrock are shown on the surveyor's plan, the applicant should attempt to estimate the quantity of rock removals required. Further, to clearly identify the extent of all site disturbances necessary to permit development of the track. The plan should illustrate the limits of proposed regrading necessary for construction of the driveway. All necessary swales and drainage facilities, the grading around the house and at the SST S system, including construction, constructing the access needed to permit placement of the SST fill required. The overall quantity of cuts, fills, and required should be estimated as well. The finished floor elevation of the dwelling should be specified on plan to assist in determining this information. All trees within the area to be disturbed which will require removal as part of the lot's development should be highlighted on the plans for the town's understanding of the extent of clearing required to address necessary access by emergency apparatus to the house site. Pull-offs along the driveway will be required by the local fire department to allow emergency vehicles to pass. Referrals, the subdivision plan materials have already been referred to the zoning board of appeals and town conservation board. It has also been referred to the Continental Fire Company for, Continental Village Fire Company for comment. Any responses received from these agencies will be referred to the applicant for their attention. The town board has recognized the challenges which exist in attempting to develop within this area. Though through decoration of the new Upland Drive Ridge Road Development Districts, section of the zoning ordinance, this was done because lands along Upland Drive, Cliffside Court, and Ridge Road in the southeastern portion of the town have long remained undeveloped for multiple reasons, including environmental restraints such as steep slopes, lack of municipal roads, and many tracks reverting to the ownership by government entities. Okay, there's a lot in there, but all that's before us tonight is the variance for...
There were a couple paragraphs.
The drone way, which one?
There is a couple paragraphs at the top of page three.
I read that, didn't I?
That house will live in slopes of fifteen and twenty-five.
I thought I read that.
That's...
Which one? I read the, with the current demand for real estate, right? We got that, we got that.
Yeah. It was really...
That's a suggestion, I mean, if there's any discrepancy, you can say that Ron Gaynor's June tenth, two thousand twenty-four memo is part of the record.
Part of the record, okay. The reason I wanted to read, I wanted to board mine is to be a little aware of what the, what the planning board, the issues the planning board had, has, and it seems like there's a number of concerns that they have. But like I say, all that's before us is that the variance, now variance is for the driveway of thirty-five percent and the foundation. Now, just, anything else that comes back to us, we'll deal with it at that time. Regarding this, there's also been some letters that have come in. Let me look at them. Communications. Let's see. Dear zoning board members, this is from three different families. Lou and Madeline Metty, M-E-T-T-Y, Nancy Lovell, Jeff and Christina V-U-C-I-N-A-J. I have no idea how to pronounce that, but that's how it spells. We're writing to express our full support in Amanda Vasta's new construction. We welcome and support Amanda and Louis in becoming our new neighbors. We understand that the project requires a variance for certain steep slopes. Once this variance is approved, it will finally enable them to commence their long-awaited project. Everyone who lives here, including our neighbors who live on Upland Drive, has had nothing but positive experience with Amanda, Louis, and Amanda's father Sal. We find them to be very friendly and community-minded. Since purchasing the property, they have contributed every year and without hesitation to our winter snow plowing expenses, and they have generously helped us with road repairs, both Cliffside and Upland Drive, as well as with other work where a helping hand or heavy equipment was needed. In summary, we ask that you request approval for the variance as we eagerly anticipate welcoming them as our new neighbors. Their dedication assistance will greatly enhance our community. All right, that's, that's a letter in favor. And then we have, let's see, there's another different letter. This is from the, let's see. We just got this tonight, so. This one here, I'm going to go to the one with all Phillips Town Board. You got the same one, this one here?
Yeah.
Okay. His concerns of vast a lot at Nine Cliffside Court. They are now going from board to board following referrals from the planning board on five, sixteen, twenty-four, which they got after lying, when they asked if they have any outstanding violations. They said no, but have been told by code enforcement officers many times they have outstanding violations which they have to remove before advancing their business. I don't like anybody putting something, lying about somebody else, I just don't, I don't care for that. We're writing this so all boards should be on the same page in knowing about Vasta. This is submitted anonymously because we were threatened by them with violence. I'm not even going to read this. If anybody wants to read it, it's in the file. You know, I think it's, that becomes a little ridiculous. Next one. This is from, let's see if this is personal, let's see if this is another anonymous one. No, this is Michael S.Z.Y.P.U.L.A. I don't know, anybody got any idea how to pronounce that? Give me your help. No, okay, all right. This is regarding Nine Cliffside Court. I am the owner of Four Cliffside Court in Garrison, New York, and I write again regarding the proposed housing construction on the above- referenced premises in the Upland Drive Development District. Specifically, I address Amanda Vasta's recent request for support for her proposal to build on Nine Cliffside Court. Ms. Vasta is seeking a variance for steep slopes. While she mentioned support from some neighbors and her intent to contribute positively to the community, I remain opposed to the construction on this lot. There are several issues with this variance that could set up future problems for the room, particularly in light of new zoning minimums. We are currently in constant consolidation phase moving towards larger lots. I purchased my home with this understanding, which protects my property's privacy and value. Nine Cliffside Court is, if left, as undisturbed wooden space would be an attractive addition to the neighboring thirty-four Upland Drive, supporting a combined larger lot for further high-value construction. Instead, building on Nine Cliffside would increase housing density, detracting from the privacy or joy both by both thirty-four Upland and four Cliffside Court. Allowing a dwelling on Nine Cliffside Court contradicts the intent of new zoning regulations resulting in two permanently small adjacent homes on one-acre lots. This problem could be evaluated if the town were to sell thirteen and nineteen Cliffside Court to the Vasta family, resulting in combined lot size of roughly three acres. It could then relocate and propose dwelling, obtain a variance for the slope if needed, and contribute their fair share of assets. However, based on what appears to be a track rate of short-circuiting permitting and already having made progress on the driveway, they are requesting a variance for I doubt these alternatives have been considered. I'm deeply concerned this will become a low-budget, corner-cutting operation detracting from the neighborhood. If the Vasta family secures proper funding and acquires more land and hires a qualified builder, I may reconsider my position. Additionally, it has come to my attention from a prior email sent by Amanda Vasta that she intends to widen the road by six feet. I strongly oppose this, as I have the longest stretch of road frontage on Cliffside Court. Now, as far as that, I think that, reading in the planning board's letter, I think that that was one of the requirements, I believe, that you widened the road, and that was from the, that was from the planning board, correct? Okay, all right. But this gentleman here, at least he had the courtesy to put his name down, so microphone. Okay. The other one, I'm not even going to entertain, it's anonymous, and I have no idea who it came from, or what it came from. Okay. Now, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here? I know you're trying to build a home, I know the driveway and the steep slopes and all that. We look at all the different things, there's other ways to do it, there's other way to put the driveway, you know, tell us. I know, I've seen a lot of work here from different engineers, I guess you have your own engineer?
Yes.
Correct? And the town engineer is also working on this too, correct?
Yes, he gave us feedback, I think this was the best solution we found.
What is your name?
Luis Ruiz, I'm Amanda Vasta's husband.
Okay.
The driveway is about four-seventy feet long, the highlighted orange, the biggest part that's in the thirty percent slopes is only a hundred twenty feet long. And then the foundation, I believe, was about ten feet, that edge of the foundation.
Right. As far as, you know, my concern would be like with the fire department, but the planning board is dealing with that, okay? So you guys, those are...
Yes.
The planning board is in communication with the fire department, everything else like that, so.
Yes, we had to widen the top for the emergency vehicles.
Right. Is there any, is there engineer, any way to make this driveway less than, lower, is what I'm trying to say? I mean, it's not possible, or, I've looked at the property, it's very steep.
Yes, so this is the...
And you're putting a house on a top, basically.
Yes, the top is where it plateaus.
Because there's a lot of rock there, I see.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the least steep route for the driveway.
Right, right, okay. And how long, you bought this property, how long ago?
It was twenty, twenty?
And you've been working on this for how many, how long?
Well, the moratorium was up for...
The moratorium was there, then after the moratorium, when you started?
Then we started.
Okay.
After the moratorium was lifted.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you repeat how long you had it? Because I didn't, I couldn't hear that.
Four years.
Four years, okay.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, then the town put a moratorium on.
Right.
What happened up there was, it's a dirt road, the middle of it is impassable, and a lot of property, little properties are owned by the county. And the county's, I think the county's got an auction this week, I think, or something like that. The town, I think the county is auctioning a hundred and sixty properties or something like that, and fewer the properties in this area, so, but this is going back, that the area had a lot of hills and a lot of water runoff and so forth, so the town came up with the, they looked at it, they divided a, a new plan, you know, ordinances and all that for the, which means it's a little difficult, they have to go through the planning board, they have to go through a lot of different steps and all that, so, I wish they'd been going through. How long you been going through this process, I guess?
Two years, three years?
Three years.
Three years, going through this process, okay, so, I'll give you an idea, you know, of the length of time. As far as all these things that I read from the planning board, I just wanted to get, make everybody aware what's involved, but there again, that's their purview, not ours. Ours is just for this here, for the variance for this. And if we approve it, or if we approve it, they go back to the planning board, and then, if the planning board requires more variances, then it would have to go back to us.
I do have a question, so, so I get that you're seeking relief for the sections of the driveway that are over thirty-five percent. Does that mean that for those sections, you want to bring them down to fourteen percent? Or are you going to just be driving super steep over them? Like, what would you do with the variance?
I believe it's going to be driven over them, but we're, on certain areas, we might have to dig down in order to keep it at that fourteen percent grade.
Okay.
The, I believe the engineer specified a little bit more on that in this paperwork.
Yeah, you're crossing, you're crossing a slope that's thirty percent, making it to fourteen percent. So you're cutting it out.
They are, okay.
Yeah, they're cutting those slopes.
So the whole driveway is getting cut down?
Oh, that, well the...
Just the highlighted orange part.
Yeah, that'll be cut down more than the rest of the driveway.
I just don't understand that, because doesn't the planning board letter say that the entire length of the driveway is over fifteen?
I think it was, they were trying to get it to fourteen percent.
Yeah, we had it rear-engineered to fourteen.
But it seems to be saying that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, it says, on the, on the second page says site development, the entirety of the five hundred foot long serpentine driveway from Cliffside Court will traverse existing grades between fifteen and thirty-five percent. So...
Yeah, that's what's existing there now.
Okay, so there...
So, but you'll get it to, hang on, let me look, it said that, if you look at the bottom of that paragraph, therefore, thereafter cuts of as much as ten feet will be necessary over the next four hundred feet to reduce the driveway's grades to the town's maximum permitted grade of fourteen percent.
Okay.
So it's like, the whole driveway is, you're crossing steep.
Right.
It's, so you're cutting up to ten feet...
Okay.
To get down to...
So it's going to...
To still get to a steep driveway. Fourteen percent is pretty steep.
Is it fair to say it's going to be a lot of excavation?
Yeah.
Yeah. And some, some cutting.
A lot of hammering, most likely.
Well, why do they think it's hammering and not blasting? Do you have any idea?
Blasting gets a lot more expensive with permits.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have air compressor, rock splitter, we have the equipment to do it.
Be there for a bit.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? Anyone at all? No. Okay, any other questions in the board at this time? Any questions?
I was just, so what's, so what do you do with it? Like, that was, I think, one of the letters was saying, like, they're going to be driving heavy trucks transporting all the rubble, like, are you going to be piling it on the corner so it'll just wash onto Four Cliffside, or is it like...
Have to be disposed of.
Disposed of, so, there's no threat of just using it to redirect rainwater onto property of your neighbor, whatever?
No, yeah, we would have to dispose of it.
Okay.
All right, just, I want to go to five factors. What this is, this is five factors that the board uses that to help us determine whether we approve the variance or not. First question is, will an understandable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or will a detriment to a nearby property be created by granting of the area variance? The existing character of the neighborhood will be retained. The new house will be aligned with the four existing houses on the street. The granting of variance and construction of the new house should improve the aesthetics of the area by creating more of a neighborhood feeling. Well, I went down, I did do a look at the property and look at the houses. There are houses in the area right across the street from you and on both sides and all that, and there, there's a house or two beyond you too, I believe, correct?
The house is down at the end of the street.
Right, 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 and I noticed it's a lot for sale across from you too, that's going to be auctioned off by the county or something like that, I saw that. All right. Number two, can the benefits sought be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than the area variance? It is not possible to exceed without the variance. A variance is required to quote from the forwarding letter of the planning board. Specifically, one seventy-five eighteen dash two C includes the following provision. The steep terrain and ridge line protection regulations of code one seventy-five thirty-six shall apply, and in addition, disturbance of slopes thirty percent or greater for a purpose other than those listed in code one seventy-five thirty-six B, section one, shall require grant of an area variance from the zoning board of appeals. That's us, that's what you're doing here. Is the requested area variance substantial? The area variance will cover on property of slightly over one acre. It will allow the construction of a building that most likely could have been built as a right before legitimate environmental concerns caused an increase in restrictions in this hilly area of the town. However, the construction on this property will not have an impact on the environmental, environment greater than any construction in any area. As means of mitigation erosion, the greatest risks are available and will be utilized. Well, I guess that we talk about the environment and the construction and all that, it seems that the engineers, both your engineer and the town engineer seem to be addressing that with the town, with the planning board. From the letter I read, there's two letters I read last month that seem to be addressing that issue, though that's not our issue. Though that's not our issue. Will proposed variance have an adverse effect on the impact of the physical or environmental conditions in neighborhood district? To mitigate any adverse effects, particularly from erosion, which we view as the most significant risk, we have already worked in the area to fix several collapsed block to otherwise deteriorated drainage pipes and culverts, as well as redirecting water away from the surface of the cul-de-sac. We have also repaired and resurfaced sections of the road to prevent erosion or water retention and flooding. Additionally, aesthetic quality of the sites such as existing rock outcroppings will be maintained. I see there's a lot of work there, you know, that has to be done. I guess you are prepared, you're willing to do that from what, what it appears, and is your father in construction, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, is the, it's difficulty self-created. This consideration shall be relevant to decision of the port of bills, but not, shall not necessarily accrue the granting of the area variance. As we note in our answer to the second question, the need for a variance is due to relatively recent change in the law. Are you bought, did you bought the, buy the property before that was passed, or...
We bought it.
The town...
Right before the moratorium.
I'm sorry?
Right before the moratorium.
Right before the moratorium, okay.
But we did not file any building permits or anything, so the moratorium went in, yeah.
So that tells you got caught in the middle, okay. At this time, we have not commenced construction other than by erecting a temporary pole for access to power at when and if that becomes appropriate. We therefore believe that we have done nothing to create this need for a variance other than by purchasing the property in that sense. We merely stand in the shoes of the previous owner. Actually, our situation is more equitable. As we purchased this property just after the law came into force, without any knowledge of impact it would have on us. We have worked with the planning board and the town officials for over a year to ensure that the effect of the construction and occupancy will be minimal. All right, thank you very much. Is there any questions? Was there anything else you'd like to say?
I think that's it.
Okay, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say one quick thing.
You can say whatever you want, just tell us who you are.
Amanda Vasta, I own the property.
You own the property.
And...
You're the problem.
I just want to say, listen, it's my father, he's just a loving father. We bought this land because he wants to build his daughter a home. We didn't think, you know, all this would happen, and that's kind of our intention, so we're just hoping that, you know, we can work with you guys through, through this. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions in the board? Any members? Anybody have any questions? At this time, I make a motion, any question, any other, anybody else want to speak? No? Time to make a motion that the public hearing be closed? Got a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. This time, motion, I guess, of variance. Do we want to discuss the variance before we vote on it, or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
What do you have to say?
Actually, you know, I'd like to be able to get together.
Yeah, so I think if you'd like to discuss with counsel, someone should make a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal issues with counsel.
Okay.
And then someone should second it.
All right. I make a motion that we want to close session for a discussion with council.
I second it.
Okay. We'll go downstairs, we'll be back shortly. We're back in session. Apologize for being so long, but there were another, number of things to cover and discuss. Just want to know that we read it to record the report from Ron Gainer, the planning board. Read into record the letter from the three neighbors. Letter from a gentleman on... Anonymous letter, anonymous letter, we have, everybody's read that one. And a letter from Mr. Michael Spriff, he's up there on Cliffside. And we've reconsidered, we've considered everything, and it's all on matter of record. Is there a motion for seeker?
I'll make a motion that is a type two action under seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, after having reviewed everything and gone through everything and spoke to attorney, I'm going to call for a roll call, vote for a demotion. I'm going to start with Mr. Spencer.
I vote to approve.
I vote to approve.
I vote to approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, you know, it took so long, but there's a lot involved, things that we have to go through and everything else like that, okay? Don't cry, what are you crying about? All right. I know you got a lot of work ahead of you, but good luck. Okay, thank you.
Good night. You got to close this.
Oh. I make a motion to call the, call the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was quick. All right.